I'd be happy to call this work session of the Board of Supervisors, Budget Work Session of the Board of Supervisors to order. And hand things over to the manager.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is budget meeting number two out of three possible meetings. This meeting is going to focus on the operational budget of all the funds, primarily General Fund and Sewer Fund, but we will go over every fund. Dory has the capital on the agenda only if we need to refer to it, but we're not planning on going over the capital like we did last week unless a board member would like us to address something. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Reed to start his presentation on the 2026 Springersbury Township budget.
All right, good evening, everyone. Or should I say Three Musketeers? Thank you all for being here today as we gather to discuss, you know, a topic that is crucial to our community's future and well-being, the 2026 budget for our municipality. I'm excited to be here to share our recommendations for a balanced budget. We spent a significant amount of time preparing next year's budget. I want to thank the Township Manager, Directors, and others who have participated in meetings to support the information we are going to go over today. Special thanks to Abby Kazi. She helped design the PowerPoint, the cover of the budget booklet, and the cover pages for each fund inside the budget. So thank you very much to her. I wonder why that's not all on one line.
New branding.
I know. That's not supposed to be like that.
As long as you don't end it with a G.
Well, we're off to a great start. I wasn't planning on that. First, I'd like to share with you the overview of the presentation for this evening. I'll go over the following information. First, facts about Springersbury Township. And then we'll cover characteristics of the budget, a recap of our finances in 2025, review the budget process, review the budget totals by fund, overview of the General Fund, overview of the Sewer Fund, overview of the remaining funds, review of the 2026 Capital Improvements Plan expenditures by department, a presentation of an economic forecast by your college business major, monthly and annual cost comparisons with our tax base, and then looking ahead to 2026 and beyond. For all those here and around the world, I'd like to take a moment to talk about the place we call home, Springersbury Township. We are located in York County, Pennsylvania. Township population is 27,058 people at the 2020 census. Our median household income is $84,422. Central York and York Suburban School Districts educate our students here in the township. We are 16.7 square miles of mostly rural, open space, and residential areas. We have 12 parks in the township. We have 95 full-time township employees. And our fiscal year runs from January 1st through December 31st each year. Our budget adoption is before December 31st. As we dive into details, let us first remember the characteristics of a successful budget. A well-structured budget is organized by fund, department, and program. Each line item serves a purpose. It allows us for control and fiscal management. It identifies the costs of each department, activity, and program, ensuring that we have a clear understanding of where resources are allocated. It presents funding levels for all activities in the operating budget, reflecting our commitment to flexibility and responsiveness in meeting community needs. I also want to mention, when you look at the budget packet, you know, the reminder that we had changed software companies. So all accounts came over from Eunice into Cassell. But in that budget packet, you'll notice there are many line items that are not being used or have shown a zero for many years. At some point, we will be going through our software to review and delete any line items that are not being used anymore and to also make sure the titles of each line item are appropriate. So that'll probably thin out the budget packet itself once we do that later this year. This brings us to sharing our budget story. Our goal is to engage and educate the community in this process. We want to build trust and transparency because we know that our success depends on the understanding of others. The budget is not merely a financial plan, but a connection to our community values. It reflects our priorities and hopes for a stronger, more vibrant future. And ultimately, it strengthens our connections with the community. So as we reflect on the challenges we face in 2025, it becomes clear why this budget is so vital. After the first six months of the year concluded, our revenues were down by 1.3 million and expenses were up by 500,000, which is roughly a $1.8 million difference year over year. We saw a decline in revenue across key areas. The revenue for construction and development permits fell short of expectations. Our real estate transfer tax revenue did not meet our projections due to the competitiveness for homes, low inventories, and interest rates. Grants that we had hoped would support initiatives were also down. On the other hand, our expenses increased for professional services, contract services, insurance, and utilities such as gas and electric. These challenges have made it clear that we must be more strategic than ever in planning our 2026 budget. In face of these challenges, we took a more proactive approach to budget planning this summer. First, we engaged in meaningful discussions with our core partners. We met with Chris Gibbons from Concord Public Finance to understand our current debt levels and capacity for future debt issuance. We met with KC and his team at York Adams Tax Bureau to understand current and future tax revenue projections. We discussed information sharing and how we assist them in providing them information to maximize tax revenue generation. We met with banks to obtain higher interest rates on our funds and reduce fees. We met with Brad and Jason from Portnoy Law to start the collection of past due sewer bills. Letters have started and continue to go out to obtain this revenue owed to the township. We had meetings with Benacom to help ensure the lowest possible medical costs to the township. We talked to workman's comp companies, and we also reviewed our liability insurance. We met with our representatives and brokers who sell electricity, gas, and phone services to review our needs and find the lowest possible cost for the township. I want to thank Nita, Dory, and Mark for their efforts in working with our vendors to manage our costs. Overall, we were able to engage providers to determine how we can keep costs down going into the new year. Another proactive approach to this year's budget was reviewing township fee revenue. Each department head was asked to assess the current fees they charge. The first priority was to confirm that existing fees adequately covered the associated costs. The next task was to conduct a comparison of fees against neighboring municipalities to ensure a competitive fee structure. This process is intended to ensure citizens receive high-quality services at a reasonable price and to identify any potential new fees that should be considered for implementation. This slide here shows the timing of our budget process. As you can see, we start mid-year. It honestly felt like it was 12 months, not since July. But you can see, we started the capital improvements planning in July. We had the beginning of our preliminary budget planning in August. In September, department budgets were created. We had department meetings with the township manager. In October, we finalized our five-year capital improvements plan. In October, here we are, preparing the preliminary budget. We have our budget work sessions. And then in November, we have the budget presentation by the township manager. And then in December, the final approval for the Board of Supervisors. Now let's take a closer look at the budget for 2026. Here we have a slide broken down by fund. The township maintains 14 funds. This does include the Development Authority, which is a separate entity. The Non-Uniform Pension Fund and Police Pension Funds are funds we manage but are not listed separately in the budget. Municipalities use separate funds to account for financial activity, and the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments use fund accounting to maintain separate funds for distinct financial activities and purposes. So why are funds separate? There's legal and regulatory compliance. Many funds are legally required, such as special revenue funds for specific projects or taxes. And keeping them separate ensures adherence to legal requirements. There's financial control. Separating funds allows for better tracking and control over money intended for specific purposes, preventing the commingling of funds that could lead to mismanagement. And then lastly, there's transparency and accountability. Separate funds provide clear reporting on how different types of money are raised and spent, allowing the public and governing bodies to understand financial decisions. Here we are, first, the General Fund. This fund is used for government operations. This is the core fund for all municipalities. Our General Fund has a budget in 2026 of $21,8372. Next, we have the Liquid Fuels Fund. The Pennsylvania Liquid Fuels Fund is a state program administered by PennDOT that provides funding to municipalities and counties for the maintenance, repair, and construction of their locally-owned roads, streets, and bridges. Funds are derived from the state oil franchise tax and distribute basically based on locally-owned road miles and population. To receive annual allocations, eligible municipalities and counties must submit required annual reports to PennDOT by specific deadlines. Our Liquid Fuels Fund has a budget in 2026 of $833,760. The next one on here is our subdivision Recreation Reserve Fund. This is savings arrived by fees coming from developers. This fund has a budget in 2026 of $4,000. Next is the Petition Streetlight Fund. In Pennsylvania, municipalities can fund public street lighting through a petition process, special assessments, or by seeking competitive grants. Funds from these methods are often kept in a specific account, dedicated to streetlight maintenance and operation. We do have the streetlight tax. This fund has a budget in 2026 of $100,000. Next, you'll see the Capital Improvements Fund. This is the fund we reviewed last week. This fund supports our capital improvement plan by providing funding options for planned expenditures. Our General Fund debt service is also transferred in and out of this fund. This fund has a budget in 2026 of $5,862,734. The next fund here is the MS4 Stormwater Fund for Water Quality. This fund supports the MS4 program in the East and West Tributaries. This fund has a budget in 2026 of $66,000. Next, we have the Sewer Fund. This fund supports the sewer system and wastewater treatment plant in the township. This fund has a budget in 2026 of $13,338,228. Other funds we have include Stormwater Reserve Fund, Escrow Fund, Library Fund, and the Shank Trust Fund, which make up a budget of total of $6,000. Next, I'd like to share an overview on each of the funds for our 2026 budget. First, we have here the General Fund. I'm pleased to announce that there will be no proposed change to the municipal tax rate. For revenues, we have taken a conservative, prudent approach. With revenues being down in 2025, we did not want to overestimate what we expect to generate in revenue. We looked very closely at the past trends when we determined the revenue projections and the percentages of taxes collected. We did the same on the expense side. We cut expenses in several areas to be closer with projections and set realistic spending limits. While costs continued to rise, we took a proactive approach with trying to lower costs with our providers for 2026. We have balanced the budget without the use of fund balance. Next, let's take a closer look at the General Fund revenues. Taxes make up a majority of revenues for this fund at 67%. Real estate taxes are down slightly that we budgeted for 2026. The board opted to lower taxes back in 2024. This total reflects the mils rate and taxes we expect to receive. Other taxes, which are those collected by the York Adams Tax Bureau, include your local service tax, earned income tax, and the mercantile business privilege tax. We do project a slight increase in 2026 based on the data provided by York Adams Tax Bureau in our meetings. Next, we have an increase in intergovernmental revenue with receiving grant funds. This category makes up state grants, state shared revenue, local grants, local school districts, and the York Adams Tax Bureau additional fees that we receive. Next, you'll see charges for services. That decreased to reflect the trends in permit revenue received from community development. However, I do want to mention that later this year, we will be proposing changes to increase fees for several of our services with community development and recreation. Those fee changes are built into the 2026 budget. I want to thank Brandy and Randall for their fee comparisons and their prep work they completed. On the next slide here, we just want to review the real estate taxes that our residents pay. The main misconception, I would say, for most residents in our township is that our township is responsible for all property taxes. A lot of times, we are getting blamed for school taxes going up. We all know that is not the case. Real estate tax is the only tax authorized by law to be levied by all classes of local government in the state. Every property owner pays real estate taxes to three independent classes: the county, the municipality, and the school district. Property taxes in Pennsylvania apply only to real estate, land, and buildings, and are not levied on cars, business inventory, or other personal property. The amount of property tax you will owe is based on the combination of your assessed property value as determined by the County Assessment Office and the millage rates of the municipality and school district in which you live. First are the taxes Springersbury Township can impose. As you can see, for 2025, our tax rate remains the same at 1.5 mils. It's the only tax rate governed by the township. The last increase was in 2018, and the last decrease was in 2024. Next, you'll see the county. The county tax rate in 2025 is 6.9 mils. Their last increase was in 2022. And their municipal and county taxes are billed in February of each year. And then third on the screen, you see the school districts, York Suburban. You see their tax millage rate, and then also Central York. Their taxes do increase, or they have increased, every year for the last couple of years, and their school taxes are billed in July. Next, I'd like to cover the General Fund expenses. As you can see, the largest expenditures are for public safety, which include the police and fire services. The cost for the Yoffa Contract did increase for 2026. The other departments were up slightly or down slightly year over year. Like I said, we did look at realistic spending limits, where we tied the 2026 budget numbers to past trends. We evaluated the costs with our vendors. And I will say, we are principled in how our funds are being spent. Now let's take a look at how each department's expenses are budgeted and the difference from year to year. So Administration, for expenses, there was a decrease by 15%. This included contract services, professional services, and the inter-fund transfer to capital. The reason this was down 15% is mostly because of that inter-fund transfer. We are sending less funds to capital due to expecting to receive that RACP grant in 2026. This category is also made up of the Board of Supervisors, Administration, Tax Collection, Professional Services, the Library, Insurance, and the Inter-Fund Transfer. The Finance Department decreased by 0.45%. Should I get a clap for that? I'm controlling my own department, okay? Information Technology increased 7.58%. That's based on Elevated. Community Development saw a decrease of 6%. This is due to Contract Services. And looking into the budget, there are going to be less engineering costs projected in 2026. And there is no comprehensive plan scheduled in 2026 that made up of a bulk of the expenses from the prior years. Police, there's a decrease in 1.8%. This is mostly from Contract Services. We did take Cleaning Services out of a budget item inside the Police Department. Retiree Insurance is down, and so that decreased by 1.8%. Fire and Rescue increased 5.28%. This includes the Fire Relief Association payment into that total of $107,000, but does not include the capital expense of $219,595 coming out of capital. Public Works, we saw an increase in expenses of 4.42%. The reason being personnel costs and general expenses, such as gas, oil. And then all the cleaning came out of one item inside the Public Works budget, which is Township Buildings. So what was happening was there were different cleaning budgeted items within the departments. We thought it was wise to have it come out of one department item. So that's why you're seeing some of the decreases within some of the departments. And with Public Works, we took on that, and Township Buildings has that cleaning expense. Parks and Recreation, we saw an increase of 3.4%. This is basically due to personnel costs and contract services. We did add into that budget an item for AI and then also park design. And then lastly, we have one here, the Transfer to Capital. That includes debt service and gaming revenue. Like I said, that is less going into 2026 because of that RACP money expected to come in. Other updates with compensation. Wages and insurance continue to rise year over year within each department. You know, we're doing our best to control those expenses. We are budgeting for a 3% increase for non-union employees. The Contract for Teamsters runs through 2027. We are currently on contract renegotiations with the Police Department. We saw medical increases by 6.5%. Dental increased by 5%, and vision stayed the same. As I mentioned before, we did see increases with expenses for Yoffa and Elevated. Several of the department decreases were a result of moving that cleaning expense from individual department budget items into one budget item under Township Buildings. What also helped this year with our budgeting was setting realistic numbers with having two years of data to review the expenses and trends with the monthly expenses for this building. We can project more effectively when we see the expenses for air, heat, cleaning, and utilities. So that has helped as well to see that full year in effect, to see what those expenses are. And overall, we budgeted for a decrease in revenues and expenses by 2.4%. Lastly, I wanted to share a slide with our General Fund balance history. Our township has had a fund balance policy at 10% of our budgeted amount for the year. Fund balance is the amount of reserves the township needs to maintain with cash on hand. Last year, 2024, the cash we had on hand with our General Fund ended the year at $7,152,822. To balance the budget in 2025, the plan was to use $789,452 of fund balance. With this year's budget being at $21,832, we will need to maintain cash reserves of the $210,837.20 in 2026. While in the past, it appeared we do have a larger fund balance in the General Fund, there is money that is designated for other purposes in that General Fund, such as the Park Safety Grant, the Community Care's Fund, the Online Payment Services Account, and the CEO/Fire Laws Account that should not be included in that General Fund balance. And we no longer have any remaining ARPA funds. That was in the fund balance in prior years as well. So the total fund balance as of October 7th, taking out some of those accounts that have designated monies towards them, is $5,934,449. I do want to note that that would come down to this month because we have our November and December Yoffa payments, and we also have new payments that are due coming up in November. So that'll bring that fund balance down a little bit. I do believe in a healthy fund balance, and I do feel it is very important to our financial health and stability to have a good fund balance. We want to be able to weather emergencies, cover any shortfalls, avoid short-term borrowing, and sustain our bond rating. Balances are reviewed throughout the year. Earlier this year, I did complete the GFOA Reserve calculation worksheet, which helps determine the fund balance municipalities should keep on hand. It did imply our fund balance should be at 25%. But I will say, with that, I felt their questions were more subjective than objective. However, it was a nice exercise for me to go through. Our fund balance policy has not been updated since 2014. In the upcoming year, I would like to have our fund balance policy reviewed and to see if we need to make any adjustments due to the size of our budget, the needs of the township, and future financial planning. The next fund I would like to talk about is the Sewer Fund. This fund is used for all the revenues and expenses generated from our sewer system and the wastewater treatment plant. For 2026, we have a balanced operating budget at $13,305,431. We are seeing rising costs each year. Going back earlier in my presentation, I had mentioned that departments were addressing the fees we charge and analyzed if we are covering our costs. The finance team reviewed and prepared projections to determine what we can expect with our revenues and expenses the next five years. We also included the capital project expenses that are scheduled for the next five years. So with that, as you see on this slide, we did determine that we would be at a deficit if we do not adjust our current sewer rates. And you can see on that slide, through 2026, 27, 28, 29, and 30, those are the deficits that we would expect if we do not raise our sewer fees. We're projecting 1.3 million in 2026, 1.365 in 2027, 1.433 in 2028, and so forth on that slide. We met with the Township Manager and reviewed several options to increase sewer fees to cover our deficits. The rates we looked at were the residential rate, the fixed residential rate, the fixed commercial rate, and the consumption rate. I do have the information on that slide here for current 2025 sewer rates. Right now, we're at $80 per quarter for residential service, $85 per quarter for commercial service, and then the consumption rate is $3 per 1,000 gallons over 22,700 EDUs. Right now, the current customer count is at 8,600, and our billing for 2025 is at $4,653,239. And I did include in your packet as well a memo that details kind of the history of our sewer fees. I thought that was really nice to do so you can kind of see where we've been the last 18 years. It does show you a lot of the timing of our rate increases and the revenue that's generated. So for 2026, on this slide here, we're proposing to go from $80 to $85 per quarter for residential fee. That would bring in an additional $138,000. That would bring in an additional one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars in additional revenue. For two thousand and twenty-six, the commercial rate, we're proposing going from eighty-five dollars to ninety dollars per quarter. That would bring an additional sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars projected in additional revenue. And then the two thousand and twenty-six use consumption rate, we're projecting to go, or we're recommending to go from three dollars to four dollars per one thousand gallons, and then increase the EDUs from twenty-two thousand, seven hundred to thirty-one thousand, nine hundred. That would bring in an additional one point three, one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars in additional revenue. As you can see on that screen, the last increases that were completed were, are there at five dollars, was back in two thousand and twenty-four for the fixed residential rate and the commercial rate. And the last increase for commercial consumption, that didn't happen in, this is the first increase since two thousand and twelve. So we're going up against thirteen years since we've increased that consumption rate. Now you can look at the graph. I tried to make it as clear as possible, or clear as pie, but you know, I'm sure, it was, it was tough to get it where I can get it as clear, but I think this is clear enough hopefully for you. You look at there at two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. So with our sewer rate increases, that would bring in additional one million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, twenty dollars. So part of that number, a portion of that would go towards our operations that we need to function within our sewer fund for operations. We would designate one point three million because of the rising costs. And then also with our capital projects, a portion of that would go towards capital projects. So you can see there in two thousand and twenty-six, one point three million would go towards operations, two hundred and fifty-five thousand would go towards capital projects. That total equals that one million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, twenty dollars. Now, looking at that first column there, you can see the cash we're projecting to have on hand on January first of twenty-six is three million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. We bring down that two hundred and fifty-five thousand that would be used towards capital projects and revenue. The capital projects there in red for two thousand and twenty-six is two million, seven hundred and ten thousand. And then take that out, the total we'd have left for future years is that one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. So then you take that one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars, you add that into two thousand and twenty-seven, and then you take out, or you add in what the revenue would be for the fee increases of one hundred and ninety thousand, twenty dollars. Take out what the capital expenditures are planned for that year, and then we'd be left with three hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars that would be then used for two thousand and twenty-eight. So the increases that we are asking or recommending would be, so that way we're not increasing fees every year. You know, if we do a fee increase as we're recommending, we wouldn't have to look at a fee increase until two thousand and twenty-eight. Next, I'd like to review a few highlights of our other funds. On this slide here, you see our Liquid Fuels Fund. We have this balance for two thousand and twenty-six. As you know, a challenge with every municipality is a decrease in funding from the state year over year. We budget in this fund for snow and ice removal, traffic signals, street lighting, and highway construction costs. The next fund here is our Petition Streetlight Fund. The tax revenue for this fund is consistent year over year. We have expenses budgeted for material supplies, electric, and contract services. The next fund with just a little bit more detail is the Water Quality Fund. The Wastewater Treatment East Tributary Project remains on hold. We have budgeted some funds for the West Tributary, basically for general maintenance. And then the remaining funds that I have listed there all really have minimal activity. We basically just have budgeted for the interest earnings into those fund. The escrow fund is being held for development of projects, and the funds simply go in and out, and there is no budget for that fund, so that's why you don't see the escrow fund listed there. The last fund that we touched on last Monday is our Capital Improvements Fund, so I just want to do a little recap of the information we reviewed last week. So here you can see, we're waiting on that three point five million RACP funding to hit our bank account hopefully in two thousand and twenty-six. That does help out our capital projects and our budget for two thousand and twenty-six. We did receive the Springusbury Park Security and Lighting Grant of over a million dollars. That is in the bank, so that will help us with our cash flow and the project for that project next year. The Capital Improvements is budgeted for eight million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars in projects. Just to review, five million dollars, five million, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars is for general fund money. The rest is three million, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That would come out of the Sewer Fund. Within that Sewer Fund, the Springusbury portion is that two million, is two million, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then the inter-municipal portion is eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So I just wanted to just clarify that, because I know there were some questions last week about that. And then also, within the Capital Improvements Plan, we have included the two hundred thousand dollar payment from the General Fund to pay back the Sewer Fund for the annual payback borrowings for the Camp Security Park purchase. Next, this is exciting. When I attended the National GFOA Conference in June, I heard from other municipalities on how they get their local college and university involved to prepare an economic forecast for their budget presentations. I thought this would be fantastic for us to do, and this most likely has never been done by a municipality in York County. I reached out to the Dean at the Graham Business School at York College, Dr. Molly Solder, and shared with her how I thought this would be a great learning and beneficial experience for York, York College and the Township. I met with Professor Enzo Cho and Business Major Alex Gladfelter in August to have a conversation on what research they could prepare for us. This would be an independent project for Alex this semester. Dr. Enzo Cho received her Doctorate in Economics from Iowa State University in two thousand and twelve and joined York College in two thousand and fifteen. At York College, she regularly teaches both undergraduate courses, Principles of Microeconomics, Intermediate Microeconomics, International Economics, and Economic Perspectives, and graduate courses such as the Capstone, Data-Driven Management, and Decision-Making. Her research interest focuses on entrepreneurship and related issues in labor markets and public policy. Specifically, she has examined the role of individual risk attitudes and entrepreneurial decisions regarding entry and exit, occupation of choice, and other related labor market outcomes. Unfortunately, Dr. Cho cannot be with us this evening. We do have Alex Gladfelter here. He is from Dover, Pennsylvania, and he graduated from Dover High School. He is a math major, and he is minoring in economics and expected to graduate the fall semester of two thousand and twenty-six. Tonight, I'm delighted to say that we have Alex here in person to share his economic forecast with us that he prepared for us. So I have two slides here that Alex is going to go over with his economic forecast. I will say that he did prepare forty-eight, his report was forty-eight pages long. And I told him we didn't want that here. Yeah, but he is here to cover two of his slides with us this evening.
Thank you. So yeah, I'm going to be talking about the national and state economic outlook, and then some implications for Springusbury Township. So yeah, getting started, we're expecting real GDP slightly below historical expectations, around one point five to two point five percent. We're also expecting inflation to be around two point five, three percent range. Right now, it's around three percent due to some of the inflationary pressures from the tariffs and other economic conditions. So that's something to keep an eye on as we progress throughout two thousand and twenty-six. We're also expecting unemployment rates to stay around four point five to five percent. Again, depending on how the economic conditions play out, tariffs, everything, we could see increases in unemployment as well. And then I don't have time to highlight everything here with the national economy. But one thing I am going to highlight is income inequality. So if we look at the graph on the top left, the dark blue line represents the rate of growth for productivities for labor. And the bottom line, the dark blue line, represents compensation to employees. So we're seeing a widening disparity between productivity and then economic gains being redistributed back to labor. So the employer class isn't reinvesting back into labor. This can lead to heightened income inequality, which is very much what we're seeing the graph on the top right, measured by the Gini coefficient. For those of you who, if you're not familiar with the Gini coefficient, it's a measure of income inequality where a value of zero would represent that income is distributed equally among income earners. And then a Gini coefficient of one, or in our case, we scaled it to a hundred, zero through a hundred, I should say, a value of one hundred in our case would represent that one individual holds all of the income. The United States, the Gini coefficient's around point four three. We're expecting the Gini coefficient to remain around this historically high level. And what this can signal, it can constrain demand for households, reduce purchasing power, and all these things. And then just to put it into, I guess, further context here, compared to developed economies abroad, we're well outside the top thirty in terms of income inequality. And yeah. And yeah, I guess to put it into further context, our income distribution is more unequal than what it was pre-French Revolution in the seventeen hundreds. So yeah, then I'm, now we can go into the state and local economic outlook. Thank you. For Pennsylvania and York County's economy, we're expecting growth to be around one point five percent, which is slightly below the national average. This again could be due to many economic, political, social, environmental factors, but we're just going to primarily look at the economy. Unemployment, again, we're expecting to be around the five point five percent range for Pennsylvania and York County, which again is above the national average. Same thing with inflation, we're expecting inflation to be around three percent for Pennsylvania and York County, again, slightly above the national average. This is, I know tariff tariffs, they have a big impact on the economy, and regions like Pennsylvania and York County that, whose economies are more tied to sectors like manufacturing, auto manufacturing, construction, logistics. Those sectors are all very dependent on imports, and we've never been more connected as an economy. So yeah, these, this is something to monitor as we progress throughout two thousand and twenty-six, especially for regions that could potentially be more impacted due to the, some of the federal policies. Revenues, these are just estimates as a result, you know, due to some inflationary impacts and stuff like that. We are expecting some rising costs. It's hard to really pinpoint an exact estimate or an exact range. However, we knew, we know these things will likely contribute to increased budget pressures and things like that. So yeah, and then here on the bottom here, you just have two graphs. One on the bottom left for Pennsylvania's economy, and that's just their GDP. Same thing with York County. There should be a label. Sorry about that. But yeah, we're expecting relatively moderate growth rates. And same thing as the national level, in PA and York County, we're also expecting income inequality to remain at its historically high levels. For Pennsylvania, the income inequality measured through the Gini coefficient is roughly like point four six, measured through the Bureau of Economic Analysis. And then the Gini coefficient for York County is about point four one, which is roughly consistent with what the national average is. For PA, slightly above the national average. All right, so I'd like to thank you guys again for having me here. Yeah, hope this was insightful, and yeah.
Thank you, Alex. Want to send a sincere thank you to Dr. Cho and Alex for their work. Alex, your forecast was insightful and well researched, and either you blew up my budget or it's great. We'll go with it's great now. One point five GDP growth is good. The next slide, I just want to take a moment and talk about our monthly expenses. So you can kind of see here on this slide, the two thousand and twenty-six estimated property tax of Township Services. And then also, if you factor in a median valued home at three hundred and fifty thousand, it would be seventy-two dollars a month as far as what would, what would be with property taxes as well as the sewer. And you know, we're keeping monthly, we're keeping our tax rate very low, and I think that's something to point out to the public too, is, you know, at seventy-two dollars, you know, your Township taxes are covered along with your sewer. And that's cheaper than your family mobile plan, your home insurance, your natural gas, your electric, and then cable and TV, internet is at the top, which I'm sure all of you agree with that. It's really, really high. But I think that's just a nice thing to kind of show where we're at with our tax base. And this isn't the same for other municipalities, I'll tell you that. So I think we're very proud at Springusbury to keep the tax rates low. And then this next slide just shows an annual cost of services compared to surrounding township. The total cost, including property tax and residential sewer. As you can see, we are fortunate to be able to prioritize our affordability and maintain high-quality services. You know, so I just researched kind of what other townships, what their, you know, mills rate are, and then also what their sewer fees are. And you know, as you can see, we're one of the lowest in the county. So looking ahead at two thousand and twenty-six and beyond, you know, just kind of go over challenges here. You know, there, it's still a competitive world with grants out there. I think every single municipality is looking for them now, rather than, that may not have been the case not too long ago. So there's competitive, competitiveness out there for grants. There might be less state funding and also federal funding. There's that strained housing market, it's pretty tight. You know, there's not a lot of sales, at least in two thousand and twenty-five, that we can say that really helped out our real estate transfer tax. So that could, that could continue to be an issue. We are seeing continued higher costs with healthcare, utilities, wages, post-retirement. You know, I think we did a great job here trying our best to kind of have a soft landing for two thousand and twenty-six from where we were in July. We did a lot of our homework trying to work with our partners and getting some of those costs lower. And then you just don't know what unexpected events can happen. You know, things happen all the time, and that's where we just have to make sure we have cash flow and that we have, you know, good debt service if we ever need to borrow, and who knows what the future might hold. But you know, I think we're well-prepared. Opportunities, you know, decreasing interest rates on the housing front. You know, hopefully that might generate some more activity while it is competitive. You know, hopefully we'll start seeing maybe more home sales to increase our real estate tax revenue. Continue with reviewing Township fees. I think that was a great exercise that we went through this year, trying to determine where we're at compared to our peers and justify, are we covering our costs? You know, we want to make sure once, you know, the most important thing is covering our costs. You know, we want to make sure once, you know, the most important thing is covering our costs. And I think that can be a continued. Mechanism for the future for us to continue to, to review that on a regular basis. And I can see us continue to do that into twenty twenty six. Just evaluating vendors, you know, we want to make sure that we have the best vendors, not only with customer service, but also with fees. You know, if we can lower our costs and get good service, you know, those are the people that we want to work with or I want to work with. And I think the township wants to work with, you know, so where we can adjust and, and, and just make sure that we're working with the right people. Lowering our costs would be definitely a great, a great benefit there. Identifying additional revenue with York Adams Tax Bureau, I think it was great that we were able to meet with them this year. And determine kind of where our taxes are and where they're projecting our taxes to be. And it was a great experience. We started a process where we're doing more information sharing so we can make sure that we're. That they're getting, that they have the most information at their fingertips so then that way we can generate even more tax revenue. When things are occurring in our township with permits and construction and whatnot. And then also, you know, maybe the future might hold exploring new tax options. That might be something that we want to look into to see what other municipalities are doing to generate additional revenue. So as we draw to a close in our presentation of the twenty twenty six budget, I just want to take a moment to reflect on. The incredible work that has gone into this process. This year, we are proud to present a balanced budget that reflects not only our commitment to fiscal responsibility. But also our dedication to serving our community. Over the past months, we have undertaken a thorough analysis of our revenues and expenses. We brought together a diverse perspectives to ensure that every dollar is accounted for and every need is met. As we look ahead, I'm excited about the opportunities that await us. We have a bright future filled with potential and with your support, we will continue to make strides towards achieving our goals. In closing, I just want to express my gratitude to the Board of Supervisors and all that contributed with this process. Thank you.
Any questions for Jamie or anyone else?
I have one to start. Going way back to the sewer fund. So they, you've got the residential rate, the commercial rate, and then that consumption rate. And I should probably know this, this isn't really a numbers question. But who actually pays that consumption rate? That's going up from three dollars a thousand gallons to four dollars a thousand gallons.
So currently, well, it has always been. Our residential customers pay a flat rate. That.
Right.
The commercial industrial customers play the flat rate. And then any currently, anyone over. The. EDU rate, which we're currently set at twenty two thousand seven hundred gallons a quarter. Anybody over that would pay an additional three dollars per thousand gallons over that total water usage.
It's, so, and that was residential and commercial?
No, just. Commercial industrial.
Commercial industrial, alright. So, and so I, I know you don't, no one probably knows this off the top of their head, but is that mostly? People using a heck of a lot of water or is it like a big contingent of people in the, in that commercial industrial that are paying that extra? I'm just kind of curious.
I, I don't know the percentages off the top of my head, but it. And one EDU is three hundred and fifty gallons per day. Which if you stretch that over a quarter is around thirty one, thirty two thousand gallons in a quarter. We've always treated that consumption rate at the twenty two thousand number. Which is actually less than an EDU per day. So what we're proposing now is to increase that base consumption to thirty one thousand nine hundred gallons. So what I do know. Is that's reflective of three hundred and fifty gallons a day. Over a quarter. So there will be. I don't know the number, but there will be a number of commercial. Businesses that have been paying a consumption rate that will not pay a consumption rate in the future. Because we're extending it to what it should have been, I guess, all along at the three hundred and fifty gallons per day times three months. If that makes sense.
But that, but that increase still generates like one point three million dollars in additional revenue. Even though there's less people paying it.
Correct.
My thinking?
Yeah, it's one point, we're thinking it's one point three four seven, it would increase it.
So let me ask the question a completely different way. When people find out, if we do this and we, people find out about it, who's going to be mad at us?
The high consumption users, I'm sure.
Like restaurants, like factories, like schools?
It's probably going to be more the. Industrial, the larger industrial users in the township. Large institution like the prison is a high water user.
I'm sorry, who'd you say?
The prison, I believe, is the highest water.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Bakery.
It could. Not really them because they have a DDU meter because a lot of water they use leaves in their product. But.
Oh, oh, okay.
Wow, the things you learn. Okay. I'm good for that, I, I have one other question, which is, I guess, like the. One of, I guess Jamie's second to last slide, opportunities for the future. One was. Yeah, vendor evaluation. I guess with an eye towards making sure we have the best vendors. Is there's. Is there a plan to be some kind of a plan to do that in a systematic way?
There's not, there's not a formalized plan right now, but him and I have discussed things for the future.
Okay. That's all I have.
I have a few questions and a couple of comments if everyone can hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. First of all, Jamie, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate all the hard work you went into it. This one I did follow pretty, pretty good relative to the reconciliation and, and the like. Although I still have some fund balance questions that, you know, that we can talk offline. I, I really understand, I think, what you're trying to do for a departmental spending perspective. And I also really commend you and your colleagues for bringing Alex to us tonight. And Alex, thank you for your presentation that you did, I think this is great. And I, I am probably the only one on the board that would like to enjoy reading your forty eight page paper. So if you could get my email address from Jamie, I'd be happy to look at that. Jamie, I did have a couple of, of kind of like strategic questions here. When I, I hear some of the things that we're saying about being conservative on revenues. I just want to kind of get a sense that with the development that we've had. I'm curious why we're, we're still a little concerned on the real estate taxes. Of, and I understand the real estate transfer tax, I get that point. But I thought that we were adding, building more homes. The, the fall book flats project is now complete, fully online. I thought that maybe we'd be having more real estate taxes increase just by the sheer fact that we're building more.
Yeah, it's a good question, Charles. I mean, to answer your question, I think, you know, we looked at what the, what the budget number was last year. And I don't know necessarily why. With you guys, with, with the board lowering taxes, I think that that budgeted item for at least the real estate taxes was too high. You know, and our, and our tax collector, she's collecting. She's on average collecting about ninety two percent of our taxes. So. We felt that three point two would be good because I did meet with the tax collector to make sure that we had the number of mills correct. Or the number of taxable properties correct when we did that calculation. So that's why we brought it down because I don't think it was brought down when we lowered the taxes. You know, last year or back in twenty four. But I feel confident with the three point two.
Yeah, I, I saw the same thing. So the three oh eight eight that I think we actually collected for twenty four. We are, what, three oh, three one oh seven through, when was that, October seventh? Is that the through date of the interim period here on the, I, I'm switching over to the full budget document. Page three. Of the account details, it's twenty twenty five year to date, is that through October seventh?
Uh, that was, yeah, that was through October sixth. But um.
Okay, so. But that's pretty much it for the year?
For the real estate taxes under.
Yeah.
The one that ends in zero three one one oh. Yeah, I mean, that's about it. I mean, there might be some residuals coming in here. Late this year, I think last year when we saw. The budgeted number for real estate tax prior, I think some of those real estate prior funds are going to start coming in a little bit. Those people that might be past due on their taxes. Because that was budgeted at forty five thousand and right now we're only at six thousand. So I think when we looked at that number specifically, we saw that most of that came through towards the end of the year.
Okay. And we are budgeting an increase there on the mercantile tax.
Correct.
I guess we've hit three six nine one year to date and that's kind of what gives you the thought that, you know, with retail still here to an extent. Christmas holiday season and shopping going, we could easily hit four, you're pretty good with that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, when we had met with York Adams Tax Bureau, that mercantile tax has been increasing. And they're projected, we have been here at four million dollars because that's where we feel like it's going to be next year.
So, so I guess kind of where I'm going with all of this is, I appreciate us being conservative in revenues. But I also see the rising costs as it's showing up in some of the line items. I know we've decreased in some and there's that accounting move of the maintenance or the cleaning cost of public works. Get all of that noise. But we are tapping into the reserve again as part of this budget, correct? For, or, for twenty six or no?
No. No, yeah, we don't have any.
We are tapping for twenty five, though, right?
We'll, we'll have to see what twenty five ends up, but it does look like we would. Have to use general fund balance for twenty twenty five. But yeah, I will say, you know, our, our savings has been going less. And I see it decreasing and, and that's one thing that, you know, I would definitely want to look at next year is our, our general fund balance policy. And, and see if, is, is ten percent the right number? You know. It could be twenty five percent, you know, I, I think a lot depends on. You know, our budget and kind of the state of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, the state of the times. But that's something I do definitely want to get reviewed next year to make sure that we're at the right place that we need to be.
The, the bottom line, where I'm trying to get to, and I'm sorry I'm going around it. But are we really facing enough of an economic head? Was it inflation is just going to outstrip our revenues? And are we going to be facing tax cuts or are we going to? Are facing tax increases? It's kind of what I'm getting, I know we're flat here. We're using money from the reserve to plug this year, not doing it next year. We're counting on three point five million dollars to come in, right, though?
I think eventually we'll, we'll have to look at a tax increase. I mean, I feel like we've trimmed a lot this year and we've trimmed down as much as we can with expenses. I don't think we can go any lower with the expenses that we trimmed down. I thought we brought revenues a little, we brought revenues further down than where they should be based on where we're at right now and where we're at in July. There's still a difference there, but I think, you know, some of the things rebound with, you know, community development and their permits and. The real estate transfer tax, that would certainly be, create some optimism that, you know, things are improving. But I, I do have a concern, you know, that, you know, where are we going to be in twenty twenty seven? Was our general fund balance going to be at that point? You know, and so I think that's something we definitely want to, to look at. Is early on next year. Because I don't want, I don't want us to be in a position where we're kind of at right now with the, the sewer fund. You know, where we're looking to raise, where we have to increase our fees to pay for our capital projects. I mean, that might be something we want to look at down the road is what type of savings do we need to have in both funds? And project out, you know, what our expenses are going to be the next five, even, even longer. To make sure that we have a plan in place for. Savings for those future projects.
Got it, okay. And speaking of the sewer fund, just kind of building off of what Don was saying. Do we have a comparison of how all of our commercial rates stack up to other municipalities? I know we did a consumer or a residential comparison, but do we have an idea how we stack up for other commercial? For both the per unit or the flat fee commercial as well as the EDU fee?
We, what did you provide in that, in the memo?
I don't think I had. I just think I had a residential in there, I believe. I know we did compare, there were a few out there that we did find that do have consumption rates. Not every municipality in York County does have anything like that, but I think we found one. I think it was Manchester was at three point seven five. You know, I.
We can get more information on that.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful for us to, and building on Don's point, kind of getting a sense of who the users are that may be the most affected. I thought immediately restaurants too, but.
Restaurants, to answer, I think. It was either you or Mr. Bishop asked about restaurants. Yeah, restaurants definitely use heavy water. But most of them don't. Approach some of the real high users of water in the township.
Okay. I would like to know a little bit deeper who, what type of establishments like could be affected by that. But having looked at it, it's an increase, this is the first increase since two thousand twelve, right? We're going from three dollars to four dollars and increasing the base. Which allows let more to slip through, right? Without being, without being taxed. So. I calculate to be that's less than two percent a year for those thirteen years. So it's kind of in line with inflation, just happened to hit them all at once with it, after being flat for, for thirteen years.
Jamie, the only question I had was on that same other taxes. The business privilege tax line, I'm a little confused about. Because it's a million five, a million five, and then zeros for. Million five fifty for the twenty twenty five budget, but zero for the twenty twenty six budget. Is that in another line?
That's a good question. So what happened was when we changed software. From Munis to Casell, it brought over some of these lines. from Munis to Casell, it brought over some of these line items that aren't being used. So that's one thing that we have to clean up starting later this year where we're going to clean up some of these line items. So, yeah, it looks almost like why is, you know, nothing being put in there? And it was because it carried over.
I was hoping you were going to tell me I just found a million and a half dollars.
Trust me, I think I've looked at this thing a million times. I've looked at the numbers, I'm like, yeah, I, I don't even, I can't even tell you how many times I looked at this. So I was like that too. I'm like, aren't we not collecting? It's all together now in one line item.
So you're, just so I'm sure, you're, you're saying that mercantile and the business privilege are essentially put together somewhere?
Correct.
Took me about four years to figure out the difference between those two, so. Challenging me.
Now we're going to consolidate them, Don.
Yeah.
Mark just pointed it out to me, it's in the mercantile tax line because it jumped from 2,200,000 to 3,200,000 and zeroed out the business privilege tax for that year. Then it went back down to 2,200,000, but a million 25,000 in the mercantile, or a million 550 in the mercantile tax line. So if those were combined, you would be at 4.2 million, 4.25. So you, you've got a fairly conservative number then.
Yeah. And I think once we clean this up, our budget will probably go from 67 pages down to 50. Because there's a lot of line items that were just used in Munis. I mean, I think the township had Munis since early 2000. So, you know, there's a lot of accounts that get added year after year, but they're not being used. That's one thing I want to clean up. We'll do this later this year.
Mr. Chair.
Would you like me to adjourn the meeting or no? Do I have to actually read the agenda? Public comment, that's it, that's it.
Have anybody attended online?
Do we have anybody online?
Some, some NHTSA person. She has a complaint, I heard.
She hasn't raised her hand.
She's probably running in the other direction. Anything else from the board? Everybody got their questions answered?
Question, are we then needing a meeting on Wednesday?
Depending on how our attendance trajectory goes, we might not be able to even have one. We didn't last year.
No, I know. That's why I brought it up.
Does, does the Finance Director think we need an extra budget meeting, another budget meeting?
I see a lot of heads shaking over here.
Some of the information that the board asked, we wouldn't be able to have that compiled, I don't think, for Wednesday. That'll be a separate email that we send out to the board.
Yeah. Okay. I'm fine with the selection to not have our Wednesday meeting. Do you think we should tell?
So moved.
Mark and George? Do we tell them or not?
No.
Okay. No third budget? Anything else? Okay. Then we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.